Okay, thank you, everybody. Sorry for the delay. It is, looks like 7:18 maybe, for the July 8th, 2020 Orange Board of Selectmen's meeting, and we are all together for this meeting, first time in several months. Thank you all for being here and all wearing masks. There are some dapper masks provided by Selectman Goldblatt, and we thank you for that. Okay, fire exits are there? Is nobody here, and all of you know how to get out of here if there is? We are going to be, for those of you at home when you do see this, we are going to be limiting people that come to the meeting for the items. You would come, present your item as requested, and then you would depart. Is going to be our policy for a while until we get this whole COVID thing solved. With that said, introductions, please. I'm going to jump ahead of one thing on purpose. Go ahead, I'll start at the end of the table.
Good evening, John Carangelo. Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Good evening, Ralph Wilkenquist.
Good evening, Margaret Nowicki.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
And Ann Denny is on the side. Thank you very much. And Chris Kelly is running the show. With that said, rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Public participation is... We allow two minutes for speaker. There is nobody in our audience. Does anybody at the table have things? Selectmen Goldblatt.
Yeah, other public participation. I received a letter and a sign by a number of people from 100 Red Cedar Road, Silverbrook Estates. I'll read it in part to the board. Every year, the rent goes up. Our incomes remain the same. I was under the impression I was in a low-income housing for seniors. My rent is going to be $15.26 per month. I don't think that amount qualifies as low income. My fellow neighbors, I'd like to know if someone could take the time to check to see if this is legal. I really like my apartment, but I may be forced to find other accommodations because the meals served are of the poorest quality, and the increase makes it harder to purchase food and replace those meals. The increase also cites housekeeping costs, but the building is not cleaned properly, which is a hazard during this pandemic, and all of us are at risk. Well, when are we going to get more for our money? This has been the highest increase by far, and just seems like they are taking advantage of the seniors at 100 Cedar, Red Cedar Road. Greatly appreciate if someone could look into this matter. And it's signed by one resident, but also is attested to or signed as quite like a petition by probably just about everyone who lives over there. I just was asked to read this into the record for the board to be aware of, and want to let people know that.
Okay, is there anybody else for anything for that? If not, I just have a couple here. First off, thanks, Mitch, for that. The resident you speak of there for was in my office, and I asked him to leave my office. Those costs are driven by the expenses as charged by the utility companies and other service providers that are used to operate that facility. It is not a low-income project. It's an affordable project, and it's based on their income, and it's based on the expenses to operate that facility down there. That gentleman has his name in another place. He's possibly moving. He has told many people, so that's all I can offer there. We lost two long stalwarts of the town, unfortunately, in the last few weeks. Al Poel, who was our building inspector until the age of 92, and was treasurer of the fire department for many, many years, and member of... He taught bridge and played bridge down at the senior center, and he was on the fair committee. He was a moderator for the town for elections. Al and his wife Anita were involved very much in the town, and Al has now joined Anita. And Cynthia Butler, whom many of you knew, was a constable here in town. I believe she was a former teacher in West Haven, lived over on the corner of Russell in New England. Was quite an interesting lady. Had great fun with her for many years. And unfortunately, the two of them passed away, and this is just recent, and our thoughts go out to them and their families in their time of loss. The farmer's market is up and going. It's still a little bit light yet. It's been a new experience with the rules from the Department of Agriculture regarding COVID. It's every Thursday, 3:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the pavilion on the fairgrounds. This one's interesting. The COVID has scared everybody, of course. You have your tax bills came. But what many people don't know, if you visit the website, it can direct you, we offer three at-home ways to pay your tax bills, and a lot of people aren't aware of this. The first one that was passed a couple of years ago, it turns out they all came together. The first one is you can pay on your credit card, pay your taxes online, but there's a 2.5% charge for doing so. The second one is you could pay with a debit card, and it's a flat $3.95, and you can pay that on your computer from home or work. And the third one is with an electronic check, an e-check, and you have to make sure you have your bill and the correct data numbers and all that go with it. And if it's under $10,000, $9,999, or less, it's $2. And if it's $10,000 or more, it's a flat fee of $10. So we offer you three ways to pay your tax bill without having to come into the town hall to do it. We encourage it. We're trying to get more people to do it. The tax collector would truly appreciate it if you would do it. So on behalf of the tax office, consider one of these three online options, and you can find that on the Town of Orange website in the connections and directions. Thank you. Presidential primary, Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. All voting will be at High Plains Community Center, and you must be a registered Democrat to vote in the Democratic primary, and a registered Republican to vote in the Republican primary. Unaffiliated voters cannot vote in political primaries designated to party. The Secretary of State has sent out information on how to obtain absentee ballots. I know they're out because many people are talking about that. You did not request them. The Secretary of State of the State of Connecticut has taken this on for the entire state of Connecticut, is why they're in your mailbox. We did not send them out from town hall. Mitchell.
I just got a text that there's somebody trying to watch us. We are being broadcast live, but there's no sound. Okay, I don't know if that was...
John sent it to me.
Okay. Does Chris realize that? That's all I want to make sure.
Yeah, I told him to record it, and he doesn't have the sound working, but it's recording.
Okay.
So those of you at home...
If you can't hear... Chris, no sound.
So that's all we can offer. Thank you. All right. That takes care of that. Minutes.
Sorry, before a minute, I've... Now, the public participation was for somebody else. I have a couple, two announcements.
Mitchell?
One is actually from our Congresswoman, Rosa Deloro. Does our district or our state need you to be counted? Complete the 2020 census. This is like a public service announcement here. So we all ensure that the power is distributed equally in our country, and everyone has representation they deserve. Visit 2020census.gov to respond today, so we have a complete count for Connecticut. And the latest numbers I saw, Orange was pretty high up there percentage-wise, but just want to encourage everyone to fill out their census form, and please participate. The other announcement is that since our last meeting, Home Depot, The Home Depot has delivered a shed for us for the plastic bag recycling at the transfer station, and it's been a huge hit. People have been hoarding bags, I think. So the shed is back, the plastic bag, plastic wrap recycling is back. The shed that's there now is a temporary one provided through the manager, Matt Hyatt of Home Depot, with a lot of push from Chris Prokop from our committee on the Orange Recycling Committee to make sure this happened. We are still hoping for a more permanent structure, but at least for now, we've got everything back up and running, so please bring your bags and wrap to the transfer station. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other announcements that we might have missed? If not, to consider an act on minutes of the public hearing for the Neighborhood Assistance Program application and the June 10th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Are there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If not, is there a motion? Okay, all in favor? Pose, abstain, unanimous. Number two there, to consider an act on minutes of the June 29 special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Are there any errors, omissions, or corrections to that? If none, is there a motion? Okay, all in favor? Pose, abstain, unanimous. Boy, we're right back in it. Item number one under old business, to consider an act on implementing the fee for the bulky waste at the transfer station. I gotta go through my notes here. Wait a minute. Let's put this over here. Okay, sorry. You'll remember this. We tabled it because they were going out for a bid for it. Well, they ended up just extending the contract. It'll have to go out to bid next time. So John's request and all to price it now is correct, and we'll probably implement that not till September 1st, we think? Yes, go to people and get everything set up, and then IT will make sure that the credit card swipe machine... There'll be no cash-changing hands. There'll be a... I think we had decided on a 250-pound pass on it. We have been getting killed. You'll see in there, "Ann included," your tonnage, so you can follow all your tonnage. That's this page here, so you can follow where we are with that, the amount of tonnage is way up, and where we are with all of that. It's very helpful, I think, to see that. And I think that's... It's been a long time coming, and I think that it will even the playing field quite a bit, and I will guarantee you, you'll see a drop in the tonnage once a pay-to-play comes in. I will guarantee it. Same as when they did it for the commercial haulers of the leaf cleanups and all. We saw a tremendous decline in that. They find other places to dispose of them if they have to pay. So is there a motion to be made to accept, I guess, what was presented here with the 250 pounds, and the fee is presented and all by John? Okay, motion by Margaret. Is there a second to that one? Okay, second by Judy. Oh, questions?
No question. Can you just, for those of you who do hear the sound, just repeat to people what the charge is, and if there is an exclusion for residents...
Okay, let me find that one here.
Is it 15 cents?
Okay, here we are. Yes, so it would be 15 cents is the rate, and the minimum charge would be on... That's not correct. It would be on 251 pounds or more. You know, so you're talking $250 on... $2.50 on 2.50, at 10 cents, or 25. Yeah, it'd be 25 on that. So, and it's something that needs to come... I mean, you show up with your car, with stuff in the back of your car. You're not going to have 250 pounds worth of stuff in the back of your car. This is aimed at the contractors, the mason dumps, the pickup trucks that come in loaded to the gills, the dump trailers that come in loaded to the gills. This is costing a tremendous amount of money for the town to dispose of this, and you also get a group that borrow a truck or a trailer, or they say, "Oh, no, it's from my house." Yeah, it's from your house, but somebody else is doing the work, and they're dodging the bullet by doing that. And, you know, that's costing everybody to do it, so there's a fee to it, and that's the way it is.
And you said September 1st it started?
September 1st, we'll implement it now.
How about the tires?
We haven't got the tires yet. That's just on there as an FYI. That was on that page. It's probably coming because we've had a lot of difficulty, and I think Lakin is probably going to... I can see that rising also. It took a long time. It took over three months that bin was closed because we couldn't get them to come pick them up, and they're like the only game in town. So we have a problem there. We have the other... The paint box is full. That project was suspended, and we now have a storage container full of totes of old paint. So I'm not quite sure, Mitch, that's when your committee might look into to empty it out.
Talked to you offline on that one.
Okay, we could... Actually, we could have, if we got rid of it, we could have made that the plastic recycling shed for you.
I had asked about that as a temporary.
But it's full right now, so we need to get rid of that. So whatever you can find out there. All those in favor? Pose, abstain, unanimous. Thank you. Item number two is to consider an act on request from Simple Recycling for an exclusive three-year contract to place a container at the transfer station. I think you saw... I have to put this down a little bit.
If you don't mind, Sonny Wilson was going to join us via Zoom, but since we're not on Zoom, I was hoping to be able to just pull him on speaker so he could hear our discussion and answer any further questions that come up.
I don't care. Anyhow, so I also spoke with Richie Borr, who's president of the goodwill side of things, and spoke with Stephen Jaser, and so we have learned a lot. And according to Goodwill, they're doing about 20... They're actually taking about 20 tons a year out of Orange, not 60, as was thought from years ago. It's been running about 20. They haven't weighed the trucks in a couple of years or more now. They don't do it. And so that was part of it. You saw Goodwill's flyer. Of course, a lot of it was feel-good, but there was a financial page in there that I think was rather important. You read, or you should have all read, the responses that the man on the phone sent for Mitch's questions there. I'm not inclined, quite honestly, to go with a three-year exclusive contract, number Goodwill, I asked Stephen Jaser, I said, "Do they throw out a lot of material? Is this true and all?" He says, "No." He says, "They had a problem with them syncing up pickup times." They got that resolved, and he says, "Like, the last time they were here, they threw away a broken mirror and a couple of other things that were absolutely broken, that broken glass and stuff isn't safe to bother handling and taking with them." So they threw it out. So I think that's something worth considering. But also, in the interim, it just happened today, which is why we couldn't give it to you sooner, in surfing stuff... Ann, you have those? We have another company. Let's see, there's... Oh, you sure already divided them. All right, take two and pass. I guess I didn't know... I was going to break them up. Okay. There's another company out there that is... That does this also, and so Ann talked to her today, and it's called Baystate Textiles, and they'll come in with a trailer unit like that with drops on it. And they have this type of unit. You should have one that looks like this on the front and one that looks like this on the front. These are for at the schools. They'll put one of these at each of the schools, and this one would go to the transfer station, and they pay $100 a ton for textiles. And if you look at their... The one that has the trailer on the front of it, and you'll see on pages two and three all the towns that they're currently involved with around the state of Connecticut, whereas Simple Recycling has the one container, according to the answers on email, out in, I think, North Stonington. So this one potentially is paying more. They do textiles. It would still leave Goodwill available to have their container there. You would have this one for a textiles option. Plus, I like the fact that they'll put one of these at each of the schools, the small unit, and it's also more money. So it gives... If we are going to jump because of money, I think you have to look at the best possibility for the town. Now, this just happened today. We received this, and so I think that either we still hold up and go a little further with this Baystate, or take an action of some sort. But I think this is a real viable possibility that we did not have until this afternoon this came, so.
Jim, this is obviously new to me.
Yes, all of us.
Not aware of Baystate, hadn't heard of them, but of course, we hadn't heard of Simple Recycling, so they approached us either.
Right.
You know, Sonny, who's on the phone, did answer the questions that people had besides... So let me just say a few things. So certainly worth looking into if there's a better program than what Simple Recycling has, but I will say, I think that both Simple Recycling and possibly Baystate, learn more about them. Would be a better alternative to us than Goodwill for several reasons. You know, you... I don't want to argue about how much is thrown out by Goodwill, but you had an email from Ken Lenz that also said he observed Goodwill throwing away stuff. I observed it myself. I spoke to Vicki at the transfer station. She said that they throw out less now because she gets rid of stuff for them before they get there, and she knows that they won't take. But the real problem here is, I think, us holding on to Goodwill is probably not the right decision. And I say that for a lot of reasons, but not just because it's an alternative, because I've heard, and I know John and you, I took this one, you went down to the transfer station too, but I was told that, you know, from Bob Breiden, from Sylvie Napoli, in the offices, from Jerry Butler, Steve Jaser at the transfer station, they've had difficulty getting Goodwill to pick up, and this has happened repeatedly. Now, what I have for you, and I'll pass these this way, and I'll pass these this way, are some pictures for you to look at, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, which are pictures of the Goodwill container at the transfer station. Now, if you've been to the transfer station the last three months, you've probably seen this. These pictures were taken yesterday. So Goodwill, for as much as they want our business, according to Jerry, they've been called repeatedly. They've obviously... Jim, you've talked to Rich Borr, who's the CEO. Obviously, they got word, what we've been talking about. They've made no contact with us to pick up what's there. Simple Recycling's been in Milford for the last six weeks, picking things up. So our residents are the ones who are losing on this because they're unable to donate unless they go to a Goodwill store right now. They're going nowhere, and we have somebody on the line that's willing to put something in. I'm certainly willing to take a look at Baystate and compare it, talk to some of these individuals. But I'm also concerned, and Jim, this is something that just came up yesterday as well. Sonny had told us in his email, which I passed along to everyone, that Stonington, they have a hybrid program set up there. If you have more questions, Sonny, I'm sure can answer them, whereby they pick up the pink bags, they bring them to a transfer station, and then... They being Stonington. And then Simple Recycling just unloads there. It's only been going on for a few months, and I got ahold of the person in Stonington who runs that situation. Is your mic on?
No. The mic's not on, I'm sorry. Thank you. Got ahold of the person that's running it at... In Stonington, and what he... I'm going to find the right one here. What he told me was that it's been working very well with Simple Recycling, first of all. They've picked up whenever they've been called. It's only been a few times, but they come right away. But he also told me Goodwill is removing their bins from Stonington and all the surrounding towns. And this just came up. They got an email on June 24th, and they were surprised at this, and basically got information that said, "Unfortunately, due to COVID-19 pandemic and ongoing resource constraints, Goodwill of Southern New England, which is the Goodwill that serves us, has to suspend collections at your bin. In the next one to two weeks, we'll be removing the bin from your property." And this is signed by Robert Burns, Vice President of Finance, who's the number-two person, right under Richie Borr. And then, I guess, Stonington and a couple other places were concerned about this, and they got an email back, because they emailed Goodwill, and they got another email back and said, "Hi, all. I heard from a couple people regarding their bins donations and donations with questions." Yes, all bins are being removed from all locations. Says, "Unfortunately, like all organizations right now, we've had to access, assess our operations and make a difficult decision. We currently do not have the resources available in order to service many of our bin locations in the best and fullest ability." Goodwill is still accepting donations at their stores and outlets.
Right.
So I think it's imperative on us... I know people have said last time, they're saying, "Well, Goodwill's been there for years," and I agree, they've been there as long as I can remember, but I don't know how much longer they're going to be there. Certainly a concern for all of us. So, you know, Jim, if you want us to table this once again...
I'm not necessarily...
And to look at Baystate textile, certainly we'll work at that and compare that to Goodwill and compare it to Simple Recycling.
Absolutely. I think that's not a problem. While you have Mr. Wilkins on the phone, though...
Yep.
If you could ask him, I don't know if he could hear me.
No, okay, go ahead.
Simple Recycling started curbside in July of 19 here...
Yep.
And ended in February of 20, eight months. They, according to their records, they collected 28,616 pounds of material, which is 14 and a fraction tons.
Yep.
And it should... That should have been $858 change, but we were only paid $286. So I'm still looking for $572 from Simple Recycling.
No, because we were being paid... Sonny, if you can hear me. We were being paid 20...
Can you let me bring that?
Yeah, go ahead, Sonny. Go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate the board's side. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. In our curbside program, where you're following the traditional recycling routes, meaning you're going out and you're looking for bags at the curb, there's a much higher additional cost to actually operate that program because you don't know what the production is going to be. You're making several stops, and the cost to actually operate that program versus going to a single location is night and day. And so in our curbside programs at that time, you know, we were paying $20 per ton for that particular program. And so when you're going, when you're operating at a transfer station, and you're sending someone directly to a container to retrieve material and not making any other stops, and you're going there and back to your warehouse, the cost to do that is significantly lower, and therefore you can offer a higher price for the curb.
Yeah, Jim, it was $20 a ton we were getting for the pickup. And if you recall, when we approved that, we had an option that if we had gotten the... Our hauler, City Carding, who does our recycling, to use an iPad on the truck and located the positions where pink bags were for Simple Recycling, we would have gotten $40 a ton. I had discussions with Sylvie. Sylvie had discussions with Rich at City Carding, and they opted not to help us with that, even if we split part of the proceeds with them. So we were at the $20 a ton.
All right, so how many transfer stations are you simple at currently?
Sonny, did you hear that?
So we have the... As far as the containers, the large container, we only have that particular one in Stonington. However, and I don't have the list of cities with me, there's several places across, you know, the whole northeast where I'm running the curbside program, and then I have like one of those traditional textile boxes at a transfer station. There's that many that I just had the box at the transfer station without having the traditional program. traditional program, but I could research that.
And that was my question. How many transfer stations do you have at...
Yeah, that was one of the questions I asked him, and Stonington was the only one that came up, in Connecticut.
In Connecticut, right, right. But as far as, you know, when it comes to having a box, just having it at the transfer station and being able to go there and leave, in terms of, from a service aspect, is much, much easier than having the curbside program. And we ran a curbside program successfully in Orange. The single reason that the program doesn't exist in Orange anymore was because of the COVID-19 pandemic and having to shut down the facility that services Orange from a curbside perspective. I was able to continue Milford out of Hartford because they're doing the tablet application. And so in that program, you know, we're notified where the bags are prior to actually arriving in the city. And therefore, I can actually pick those up at a much lower cost. I would be doing that in Orange today had we been doing the tablet application, but that was turned out, and therefore, I can't run the traditional program. That is the only reason.
Okay. John, Judy, somebody, who's first?
Go ahead.
All right, okay. Thank you, Judy. So just a couple of things. First, in response to some of Mitch's comments, you know, I know that Goodwill has stores in town, and I am concerned about your comments and that you're being a little dismissive to a taxpayer in the town of Orange. The fact of the matter is, Goodwill is a taxpayer in the town of Orange, and to be dismissive like that, I think, is inappropriate. But having said that, I too have gone up to the transfer station, and I have spoken to the people that work there, and they haven't had an issue with Goodwill up until recently. And obviously, based upon your comments, this pandemic has caused a problem for all of us, not just Orange.
That guy said the same thing.
So the concern I have is twofold. With regard to the current petition to this board, number one, I don't like the fact that it's a three-year exclusive contract, especially in light of the fact that we now see an alternative that seems very promising with the money that they want to pay us. Number two, as petition to this board, Simple Recycling is saying, and I'm going to paraphrase because I don't have the language in front of me, but they're willing to remove certain items from their bin. What happens to the items they won't remove? I've never gotten an actual answer to that, and I'm glad the gentleman is on the phone, maybe he can respond to that. But one of the big concerns by our employees at the town is, hey, right now, we don't have to remove items that are left. They don't want to have to do that. And that becomes a huge problem and can turn into a mess. I mean, looking at this, yeah, the bin's closed, there's no mess. So I am concerned about that. So maybe if Mr. Watkins would indicate, what is the driver do when you come and pick up the bin? And there's several items that you don't take. What do you do, sir?
A couple, I'll answer that. A couple of things. So if there's anything in there that we don't accept in the program that is a mattress, a big screen, you know, television, things that a single person cannot pick up and carry, we are just unable to take those items, okay? Now, if there are items, let's say, if there are bags of trash that are there, something that someone can pick up, we'll gladly take those with us and dispose of them on those grounds as need be. But I just can't take items that are obvious to the program that we don't accept, furniture, large pieces of furniture, mattresses, things of that nature. I can't accept those, and I can't take those with me. And I made that, I tried to make that apparent in the proposal. But one thing I did want to address that you mentioned, Mr. Swetman, was that I was actually, as an outsider, it was brought to me that there were service issues at that bin well over a year ago. And I didn't even know that there was a container at the transfer station until there were service issues with it, and I was asked if we would be able to provide an alternative. But it wasn't through Mitch, but it was through just some things through the town. So I, you know, just, and I know it's easy for me to say that because I don't, you know, I don't work for Goodwill, but I did want to say that there have been issues from there for quite some time, because it was brought to me quite a while ago.
All right, I appreciate that comment. And the last thing I'd like to say is, we're in a pandemic. So if what Mitch is reading is true about Goodwill, who's to say that we enter into a three-year written contract with Simple Recycling and they can't remove the items? We're in the same boat, but now we have a three-year commitment. So again, I like the idea of making money. I'm not confident about a three-year commitment. I'm not confident about what I've heard from the employees about using Simple Recycling. And now that we have an alternative, I think we really need to look into that. So whether we vote tonight and voice our opinions in a vote, or whether we table it to find out additional information, it sounds as if we may know in a week or so when we don't have a bin at the transfer station.
Maybe.
So we really want to, you know, figure this out. But that's my comment, so thank you for that opportunity.
John, just one quick thing. You know, you're an attorney, you know that we're not going to enter into any agreement, whether it's Bay State or Simple, without some sort of contract. And Vinnie's going to, Vinnie is our town attorney, Sonny. Vinnie would go through that and make sure there's proper things for us as far as breaking that on either side, if necessary. But, you know, the bottom line is, right now, we're getting nothing picked up, and we're not making, even when it is picked up, we're not getting anything for it. And here we can make something for it and get things, you know, I think, better. And it's interesting what you hear from the transfer station people, because when I brought their attention, you know, without naming names, because I don't want to put anybody on the spot, they both, the two people down there both said, "Thank goodness, and it's a no-brainer," when I told them we were going to get paid. So I don't know why anything's different.
It's very interesting, isn't it?
Yeah. They gave every one of us different answers.
All right.
Okay, I just want things to support Mitch.
Sure, Sonny.
I do want to address the exclusivity. The reason for the exclusivity is that, you know, if I put a container in there, and let's say I put one of those smaller textile bins that all the schools, just as Bay State is suggesting, and I do that now, and then Bay State decides in 90 days to offer $3 a ton higher than what I'm paying the town at that time, and the town decides to go with that. Without having that protection there, then it's going to cost me to rent us some out to actually install those items and actually purchase some of those bins and put them there. I don't want to change that investment without having some protection that we'll be able to collect for some time. And that's the reason for the agreement. Everything that's in there in terms of some sort of contract is negotiable in terms of terms and that sort of thing. So I'm willing to work with the board on that, as far as, you know, as far as stipulations and things of that nature.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions?
Yes.
No. Ralph? You already went.
Ralph Oaklandquist speaking.
You lost your card in your lap, Ralph.
Hang on, Sonny.
I've had a couple of questions. Is there a maximum or minimum amount of tonnage you would pick up?
No, sir.
How often would you pick up the items?
So currently, with our current schedule that we have, we are in Milford four days a week. And so that's what we would start off with, in checking the container to see how full it is. You know, if we find out that, you know, let's say on Tuesday, and then we come back on Friday towards the end of the week, and that we can actually get everything at that one time, then we can adjust it from there. And I'm willing to work with the town on that. As far as, I believe we're in Milford Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, every day but Wednesday. And so from the furthest point in Milford to where I'm at, it would only take me about seven minutes, seven to 10 minutes to get to that transfer station, and that's why, you know, we're able to serve some.
Excuse me, Ralph. I think what, and Sonny, that's great, but I think what we would probably happen, it's probably the same as with Goodwill, when the people at the transfer station that work there see the bin getting, the container getting, say, 75% full, or whatever the rate is going, they would call Simple Recycling, and they have promised, I think in your agreement here, I forget exactly what you said, it was within 48 hours to pick up, or something like that, but, yeah.
Yeah. Well, the idea, the idea Mitch is that if I'm already making pickups in Milford on that day, then, you know, that's the closest point I'm going to be. And if that bin is not full from the curbside program, which most likely it won't be, then I can send him over to check on the container. And, you know, if we do that while we're already there, then there shouldn't be a time that it should be anywhere near full.
Great.
Some of us were concerned because of what happened back in February. I know COVID hit, and that put a lot of people in a bad strait for a while, but no one seemed to know what was going on. We had no communication. People had stuff out in the street, it wasn't being picked up. I don't, you're not, you don't have a very good track record in Orange, from what I've heard.
So I'm not sure, you know, where you would hear that from, because anyone that's, you know, dealt with me in terms of the communication, I mean, I am that full point, and I do my very best to keep everybody in the loop as far as, you know, what was going on in terms of the communication, as far as the shutting down of the facility. You know, I, because I had so many, you know, clients to deal with, I was disseminating the information to our individual municipalities, and then, you know, I had explained to them that it would be up to them to communicate what was going on with the program, with the residents. And ever since that last day that we actually collected and we announced that the program was suspended, we never picked up again. We never picked up the curbside program. So, you know, from that time, whenever we stopped, and I don't remember, sir, what the exact date was, but that was the last time that, since the initial stay-at-home order, we completely shut the program, and it never opened up again.
Ralph, as you know, it's impossible to get to everybody in town with a message, even one for wearing masks. But, you know, as soon as Sylvie got that notification from Sonny, she emailed it to me, and within 24 hours, we had it on the Orange Recycling Facebook page. I have a distribution list of people who have expressed recycling interest with me. I sent it out through an email to all those people, and I think within one or two days after that, orangeclive.com had an article about it as well. And Sylvie had it put on our website. So I'm not sure what else, other than a mass notification from the first selectmen, which I don't think would have been appropriate for that, I'm not sure, you know, what else we could have done to let people know. But the word spread pretty quickly. Since the word's been out about possibly getting this at the transfer station, we've gotten a lot of positive comments on Facebook for people excited about having an opportunity to revive this program, even in the limited way that it would be. Like I say, right now, people aren't able to take their textiles, or small things, or big things, anywhere unless they take it directly to Goodwill.
Okay.
You all set, Ralph?
I think so.
Yes, Judy.
I would like to move this forward, in the sense of saying, I think we need to table it at this point. I think there needs to be communication with Goodwill to find out what is going on. If they're definitely removing their bins, then we do need to act, number one. Number two, since we've just been given another company, I would like to look at that. I would like to make some phone calls to some of these towns to find out how they're, you know, they're satisfied with the service, is it working, blah, blah, blah. What kind of contracts have they set up with those towns? Not to throw out Simple Recycling, I think definitely let them stay in the mix. But I do think we need to figure some things out before we make any kind of decision right now. And I think the biggest thing is, why sit here and discuss whether we're going to keep Goodwill or not? They may not be there. So I think we've got a lot of information that came slamming into us tonight, and I think we've got to do our homework. So I make a motion to table.
Second.
Undebatable.
I beg.
Okay.
All right.
Let's stop the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's why I knew what the vote was.
Yeah, no, I think it's...
Okay.
Sonny, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
Okay, I thank you, I appreciate the board giving me the opportunity to represent the company. If there's, you know, another time where, you know, this item's blocked up, if invited, I'll be happy to...
Definitely.
...attend again. So thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
It'll be our July meeting. It would have been our August meeting, yeah.
All right, good.
Okay. Table. Item number one on the new business, consider and act on boiler replacement, High Plains Community Center. I need to read in a couple things here. We had a disgruntled bidder.
Oh, that's not nice.
It happens. So he asked if he could attend the meeting. I guess Sylvie told him no. So he asked for that. If not, please have this email noted at the meeting. Egerton Inc. would like to be considered for the job with the price on the bid. We feel there was a disadvantage to us. We won the bid last year, and the number we used was exposed to all competitors. Last year's Egerton bid was $35,979. Rotolo's bid was $68,676, 30K difference. Now, Rotolo dropped his price by 30K, half the price for the total job. New bid by Rotolo is $40,160, and I'm reading this without comparing to what's there. And all the competitors have this information. It's not fair to Egerton. We had our number exposed to save the town of Orange lots of money. I personally grew up in Orange and went to High Plains, gotta learn how to spell, school, and have ownership. I want to be part of the project. It is personal for me, and I will be responsible to run and project manage the boiler replacement. Please consider Egerton Gary Maturro. Well, he was down there, but then in your current bid, they went, if their bid was good, Rotolo dropped 30, but they went up 17. So, you know, he didn't keep his bid from last year.
Jim, if I can interrupt, I'm sorry. What changed in the bid that we rebid this? Just the fact it's been a year? Is that all we did change?
It was...
Or the other specifications?
Yeah, there were some clarifications, Mitch. There were a lot of, it was a little cloudy last time, and then the process got a little clouded as well. So we threw it all out and left it at that. And so then we have the note from, I have the note from Bob Britton from last year when we did this. And the reason Egerton didn't get the bid last year, the low bid from Egerton Inc. did not comply with the bid specifications in that it was not submitted on the bid form, it did not include an add alternate price to connect the boiler controls into the new building management system, and it did not include a bidder's qualification statement or a noncollusion affidavit. Also, the town questioned the large difference in price between Egerton's price for the boiler replacement at $36,000 and the other three bidders, who were $60,000 to $69,000 range. Following the bid opening, Egerton submitted the missing bid forms, the missing alternate price, 12.5, and confirmed it was holding its submitted price. So, and then it goes on from there, and he also went out and then afterwards and requested a price from somebody else, and it got a little botched up. But that was the reason why Bob didn't accept their bid last year. It has nothing to do with, we seem to have him versus Rotolo here. I don't know, maybe they have a history, which I'm not aware of. But anyhow. So now, they didn't hold their price, they went up, they're actually third now. The alternate that is referred to there is for the controlling system that goes into the building management technology, that they all use similar equipment. And the warranty on the boiler is the same for all of them, because it's the same boiler. It's a 10-year warranty on the boiler. The warranty that's quoted there is their work is guaranteed for a year. The installer's work is guaranteed for a year. So that's why there might be a little confusion there with that.
That's my question.
Yeah. And so with that, I know the, both of the two lowest bidders there, and they both do excellent work. Funk has been around for years and years and years, based out of West Haven. Rotolo's based out of, I think, New Haven. Rotolo's based out of, I think, New Haven. Ron has done a lot of other work for the town already, all around the town. Um, matter of fact, I think he did the plumbing through Olympus for the pool.
Correct.
Um, he did plumbing for, I can't think of the company that did the South Wing. Um, he did their plumbing. So I mean, he does sub a lot for two other companies, and we've worked with them, and I think he's probably been helpful to Mitch's, uh, committee as well through some of these projects. Um, so, with that said, that's, I, the man asked to have it read into the record, and that's what I did.
Yeah.
So with that said, uh, this is for the boiler that we've been keeping our fingers crossed on. Um, I believe we're paying, yeah, with LoSip, uh, for this. Um, so, that's where we are. Any questions?
No.
No?
This time it was all done properly and correctly.
Good, good. Make a motion to award the, uh, replacement of High Plains Community Center boiler to, uh, Mr. Rotolo's.
Second.
All right.
And that was, okay.
All right, any other questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous. Next one is, um, to consider an act on the request to approve the tax refunds for the month of July totaling one thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, and none of us are on there.
No, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Um, committees, uh, Pench and Mitch?
No report.
Margaret, Emergency Management?
Uh, okay, thank you. The Emergency Management Subcommittee on COVID is now meeting every two weeks, not every week. So the last meeting was held on June twenty-sixth, and the next one is July tenth. Happily, Connecticut and Orange are doing well in keeping numbers down, COVID numbers down. There haven't been any spikes in cases like there have been in other states, and, uh, we hope to keep it that way.
Yay.
Yes.
Yep.
The tri-state governors have issued travel advisories for persons who are coming from nineteen states now into our region to try to control, keep, keep it under control, and requires fourteen days of self-quarantine if you come from any of those nineteen states. Um, as, as of our last Subcommittee meeting on June twenty-sixth, there were only seventeen active cases in Orange, and three cases that were asymptomatic, but, uh, our doctor, the town doctor and everyone else feels, we have to be, continue to be vigilant, because we are not yet at the end of the pandemic. And, um, since the Phase Two opening, uh, the Department of Health has received a lot of complaints regarding people in stores not wearing masks and, uh, and otherwise. So we have to continue to, um, raise the alarm on that and ensure that people are following the guidelines if we want to keep our numbers as low as they are. Um, Phase Three was supposed to begin on July twentieth, but it has now been postponed indefinitely. Um, here in Orange, PPE supplies from official sources like the state and, um, CBIA will be, are tapering off over the summer, but now you can buy a lot of these things like masks, et cetera, and gloves, uh, you can buy them in stores, you can buy them in Home Depot and other places. Um, however, we feel that we need to have a stockpile of PPE for the fall, in the event that we should have a new outbreak, uh, just to ensure that we, we have everything on hand. And we also talked about if supplies of vaccine should become available, we need to plan how they would, how those vaccines would be distributed in our town. Um, in terms of testing facilities, Longworth has closed. Um, we, people will need to use Yellen Griffin for testing. Uh, and then the other big key issue on the COVID front is the reopening of schools. On June twenty-fifth, the governor announced a plan to reopen all schools in the fall for full-time instruction, and the state, uh, came out with a set of specific kind of general guidelines, uh, with the key issue being safeguarding the health and safety of students and teachers. But there are a lot of operational issues, as you might imagine, in, in opening the schools and challenges, and the state and our local superintendent have identified several being cohorting, that's the possibility of grouping students together and having them stay in one class with one teacher and not moving to minimize, minimize, um, risk, um, maximizing social distancing and things like the gyms and, you know, playing fields, et cetera. Uh, transportation will, all the, uh, I believe in Orange, the transportation schedule is going to remain the same as it was in the past, um, and of course, face masks. In our district, we have three thousand masks on hand, but how are they going to be distributed? Who's going to distribute them? How often will they need to be replaced? What happens if the kid, a kid forgets and leaves it at home? Can he not get on the bus? All those kinds of issues have to be sorted out, and children, there are children who have sensory issues, who wouldn't even be able to, you know, wear these, so what, what about those kids? Um, then they're looking at also the cleaning of the schools. Will the schools need to be cleaned every single night, um, in which case they're shut down for any other activity? And then would we need more cleaning personnel, which has budgetary implications? Um, and then what will happen if a student or a teacher gets sick? The class will be quarantined, will, you know, what will be the procedure for that? So, there's a lot of things to be worked out before school, school is back in session. I think, you know, everybody would love to see their kids back in school, but they're also very concerned that everything is done to ensure their children and the teachers' safety and health. Um, just a couple other things, community, community services, we, we'll be working with Dr. Amir to bring back some activities that can be handled. They are already doing some small activities, um, some outside. Uh, they're going to need a stockpile masks for seniors. Um, summer camp is in session, and then, uh, two businesses are not going to be reopening, Bruger's Bagels and Wooden Tap.
That's really sad.
Um, the farmer's market, as, as the first selectman mentioned, has been opened, and vendors are following the guidelines, um, as requested. And some religious institutions are reopening at twenty-five percent capacity. And that's it for me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, Wooden Tap wasn't renewing their lease before the pandemic.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, they didn't close, they closed with it, but weren't renewing.
Okay.
And anyhow, their lease was up to the end of June, so unfortunately. Um, Bond, I know you guys met Mitch?
Yeah, we did. We met after about a three-month hiatus, um, uh, we actually met in person, we took a big field trip, despite COVID. We walked from the parking lot over here in the back of the town hall to the parking lot at the library.
There you go.
Um, after going through several invoices that had built up over the last several months, mostly closeout stuff, um, with the dirt Milford Bridge, uh, and closeout some other project stuff, um, and invoices, going through all that, we spent a good amount of time both inside and outside the Case Memorial Library, um, especially the outside. If you go up close to it, you can see there's a lot of exterior work that needs to be done. Um, we've got some money in the bond, we're not sure how it will, far it will stretch, so we're looking at, um, you know, what needs to be done. There's, there's some inside water damage in the second floor of the library, but other than that, um, there's not, we don't feel as a committee, unless we're convinced otherwise, that there's a lot of indoor work that needs to be done. There's some, uh, but there's certainly work that needs to be done in the exterior, and, uh, we're looking into that further, um, discussing a few things with contractors, and, um, one thing Jim, I will mention to you, is it was noticed that, that the, um, the outside landscaping does need some work. Uh, a lot of stuff is so overgrown, it's also getting so close to the building that it's affecting the building materials because the, the, the plant material, and if, and if anybody knows besides me what the number of the library is, it is one-seven-six, and I didn't realize that for the last several years, you can't see that number anymore on the side of the library that faces...
There you go.
Tyler City Road, because it is so overgrown, over.
That tree should be cut down.
The numbers, yeah. So, there, there's some things that do need to be improved, but we can do, I think, as, as a community first, but, but, but that's not what the bond is for. The bond is for the exterior work that, that's going to need to be done. Thank you.
I have to talk to the contractor as far as the landscaping. That has been on a, I'll call it a lifetime contract by the installer who did it when you built the building, and, um...
Does he need a phone call?
Well, no, he, he was upset when something else was planted there years ago, and, uh, had a little bit of a situation, and, uh, I'll try to reach out to him and discuss it with him and, see, because he doesn't really charge that much for a once-a-year tune-up over there.
Maintenance, yeah.
So I'll have to talk to him, we might have to find a little bit more.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, personnel did not meet, but we will be meeting. I spoke with, uh, Attorney Ryan today, we should have, uh, the police contract back for our August meeting. Uh, there's, was one more holdup with something that they wanted, and it was a, could be, maybe, possibly, might happen, might not, you know, so, that's coming, and John just gave me the sheets this past week for the, um, hourly salary, uh, non-union people, so they've been so jammed up with this Munis project that it's taking its toll on getting some other things done. Um, and so, um, we'll have that for August. I also would like to plan for the, um, we put it off because of the situation and all, the town meeting, and the only thing left at this point for the town meeting would be the abandonment of that spur, I'll call it, of Neen and Road.
Right.
Now that housing project has submitted, and I think they're before wetlands right now, i- either they are, or they're gonna be shortly, and then they've also filed with zoning, and then they can't move forward, but everything is filed, um, as needed to be. And I think that we should, um, meet and consider, that was a question, everybody was saying, well, you know, why should we abandon the road till we can see what there is, et cetera, et cetera? Well, now you can see what there is, because they have their plans in.
Right.
So I think, uh, out of fairness that, you know, we abandoned it, but if the project doesn't go, it doesn't go, it just sits there, you know, with the, uh, thing. That land has been for sale for, I don't know, at Grabit has for sale for, oh, probably more than ten years now.
Right.
Um, and you know, if this moves that along, it's a good potential, um, really, I mean, a nice, it is a nice project, and I know there's some concerns from, you know, some neighbors, but, uh, I anticipate that as well. I mean, uh, it, it happens. So, uh, but it is in the area designated for high density and, um, uh, it's an affordable project, which we desperately need for both, you heard a letter from one senior today, signed by others, but it's also the other end of the spectrum, the young singles and young couples. Um, and it's, there is definitely a, possible for, you know, a need for, and, um, but it is submitted now in for wetlands and zoning, and I think, uh, we need to meet to do that. So the question would be, do you think that it's going to stir up so much activity that we should meet at High Plains as opposed to right here? For the original one, we were going to meet right here, because nobody really comes, and now that the budget issues and all of those have passed, and the tax bills are out, so we don't have to worry about that, those things are things that Sandy stands up for, different people talk to, the Board of Finance talks to, that's all passed.
Right.
So the only issue I have at the moment is this abandonment. Um, thoughts, go ahead.
I think, you know, when we had this discussion, we had said that, I think we voted that we wouldn't do it until we could do it in person, so with that being said, Jim, I would suggest we do it at High Plains. If one person shows, or a hundred people show, I doubt a hundred people would show, you know, we can more easily socially distant, if there is any kind of crowd, and make sure that chairs are set up, spread apart, um, and then we can meet and, you know, e- accept any comments from the public and, and then vote.
I have no trouble with that. I'm just doing a cow out, so...
Is he on Halliwell?
No.
Yeah, and I will go visit later.
Um, I, I agree, because I mean, if you get fifty people here, it might be too crowded.
Right, right.
If you get five people, it might not be.
Yeah.
But you don't know, it's a cat in a bag.
Right.
Let's not take a chance.
So, so, okay, so we'll plan our August meeting for a town meeting, and we'll notice it and have it at High Plains, in case anybody comes. I mean, we know a couple that will be there. Um, but like I said, and if you're curious in the meantime, and I'll try to get a little more information on it, if we can get stuff that Ann can email out, we'll get it for you.
Cool.
And, um, you know, go from there.
Jim, as, as a town meeting then, we have to, we have to notice this then too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I think it's important that the notice go out and let people know that we would be accepting people coming in person, but if they are uncomfortable coming, they can certainly submit...
Oh, yeah, we've been doing that.
Submit comments, emails, whatever.
Email, or written, or phone call.
So we, we can get everything, so when we make a decision, we've got everything we need, not have to worry about, yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Uh, I think that's fair, and, uh, like I said, Ann will see if she can, you know, find something that can be emailed to you, if they have anything that way. If not, you know, feel free to call Jack upstairs, Demersian, and, uh, uh, talk to him about it, but, um, you know, it's, uh, it's a piece of land that's bounded by the front part, I'll call it, of Smith Farm Road, uh, the back of the Loomis and Orange Fence properties, Hitchcock Plaza, and then it goes over to Founder's Way, and to the, um, Army Housing on the backside, so if you kind of draw a square of all those sides. So, that's all I can offer you there. Um, on it, but it does seem, you know, it does have, have merit. Um, with that, that's all I have. Um, is there anything else at this point? Oh, you'll see they've started construction and demolition and all down at Lowe's, that's underway. Um, FedEx is almost ready to get their place open there, the, uh, VA is pretty much ready with theirs. Uh, they're coming along with that, uh, healthcare, uh, place, um, on Indian River Road, so there's, there's a lot, a lot going. Bigelow T. took the warehouse building, the new warehouse building, down on the bottom of Executive Boulevard, that they were supposed to, they were supposed to, yeah, they took the, it was supposed to be two, two units, and they took the whole building, um, down there. Um, there's a few other things popping along, so, um, yeah, it's, uh...
Anything for Sam's Club yet?
Well, they're together. Sam's Club and Lowe's are both done under contract, two the same.
Okay.
Um, um, service provider, I don't know what their right title is, but, uh, it'll be coming out shortly if...
Good.
We don't know, yeah, so...
Good, good.
And you'll see, uh, Jamie Vincent, you know, moved up to Fire Marshal after Tim's untimely death. Um, he put together a panel. He did not sit in on the interviews, I did not sit on in the interviews. We opened it up to the inspectors and all to apply, and it was a panel of three or four from far out of town, and they did the interviewing process, and Tim Borer was selected. He was an inspector, and he's now the Deputy Fire Marshal, um, doing very well with that. Um, Kim Callahan has retired from community services, uh, the tax office is down one person, but that young lady is currently up in Public Works, but she may be applying for another opening, um, and we have some other movement going on, but the town hall is open and functioning, we're doing okay. Uh, Scott Bendel also, uh, is no longer at Park and Recreation, so, uh, but we're doing okay.
And how about Joan's position, if you have?
Joan's position, we're receiving resumes on, uh, she's with us till the end of August.
August, okay.
Yeah. So, with that said, is there a motion to adjourn at eight-twenty-six? We're adjourned. We're adjourned.